All the meeting to order. So, um, the first item is Lorax and its stable development. If you'd like to go ahead, please.
Sure. Boston Boswell, Tri-Tech, and the owner, Mike Brigham. We've got two items on the agenda tonight. The condition of use and the waiver request. Does the preference on which one we talk about first?
Conditional use is first, so.
Okay. That's you.
All right. So, as you guys know, um, I'm, my primary residence is the existing home at 658 Silver Street. For a while there, I explored the possibility of selling it and was told pretty repeatedly that it's just too big. Today's days, the McMansions are kind of out, which is for my own best interest because I love it. I love my neighbors, I love the property, I love the house. But I agree that it's too big. It's also unique in that there's a main house and then there's an addition. I think I showed a picture of it, which has a kitchen and two rooms above it. It has its own entrance, it has its own exit. It would be a very simple situation to seal it off from the main house, even with a door, if I wanted to access it to some reason later. So I feel like of any house, this one really lends itself to the possibility of having an auxiliary apartment. It would certainly make the house even more perfect for me. I'm just three people that I live with, my wife and my brother and myself. So, basically, I've kind of laid out my case. I typed up a quick little explanation as to what I was thinking and was hoping that if I could get the permission, that I could work with Tom to make sure it fits exactly what it needs to and that I have get a permit to put. Really, the only change to this house that would be required is there's a, an extra room on the other side of the house that I would convert into a kitchen. So, other than that, bathrooms and the entrances and the exits and the closets and everything really line up very well.
Um, your, we have just one copy of your application drawing here, it looks like.
I had submitted one with measurements, I see.
Yes, so, so we just have that one, so people are not looking at what you're talking about, so.
I didn't realize that.
At the top of the page, it says either second level or first level, so there is another page with the other level.
I think there was a photograph, too. I don't know, I should have.
Is that in there?
They were attachments to the email.
Yeah, we did print the email.
I didn't think.
I assumed they were the same things there.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the photo just really, it points out the fact that this house has an entrance and an exit on one side and then the main, the actual front of this house faces the waterfall, faces Cumberland Farms. I found it in the history of Rollinsford and back then, there weren't trees in between it and it actually looked down over the, you know, the waterfall in front of Cumberland Farms. So, currently, the way it's set up, that is the front entrance and, and then there's a back entrance for the main house that goes onto the deck. It literally has four points of egress and, um, is divided into two sections. Like, like I say, what I was hoping is to get the permission and then to iron out the details with Tom, the building.
I'll ask you for comments first.
Well, um, I haven't seen the proposal, so I'm a little.
Oh, well, we still need a process.
Here it is.
I apologize.
Actually, well, if you can, and then pass the floor plan ones down, too, if you don't.
Yeah, I, I would want for Tom to comment on verifying the floor plan and the square footage, I think it's important.
You mean this one?
Right, there's two of them, so this just kind of, that's the second floor, the other one is.
This is, this is the.
The way this house lays out, it's really in two sections. There's two staircases, um.
Right. I'm not real concerned about that, more about the accessory dwelling units as described out in his zoning ordinance. Did you, like, answer each of these points, by any chance, something?
No. What I did was I called here and found out that the day I was calling to submit these was the actual deadline and, so I, Caroline gave me an application and in that application, I did answer.
Yeah, yeah.
What I perceived as, as concerns or questions. I didn't see a list of questions.
Well, it's not really questions, a list of conditions.
I did read them, yes.
Just go over them, Mr. Karen.
Sure, what, what page are we on, please?
On page forty-eight of the zoning ordinance.
And keep in mind that, um, we changed some of these things in the March, oh, I'm just hitting you left and right, aren't I? This board would recall, though, that we need some adjustments to the accessory dwelling unit provision at the March town meeting and so I'm going to get the town report in addition.
Yeah, whose idea was that? Oh.
That's probably a faster way for us to get to the bottom of this.
We did something with the N, I remember that.
But we did change it from five hundred feet to seven fifty and that was the most major change.
Change of the wording, there's two.
The rest of it was just language cleaning up.
So, this really shouldn't take much time. I mean, you only, it's only one accessory dwelling.
Correct.
Only allowed on lots containing single-family homes, property when it was occupied one of the two units.
Yep.
Only one bedroom permitted in the accessory dwelling.
I think changed to two.
Okay.
Or it got eliminated, right?
I don't know, I don't, I don't.
I figured you made your changes to adhere to the.
Well, so if we're in conflict with state law, we would have to adhere with state law, but I don't know, you know, when we went through this revision process around accessory dwelling units, the effort was in being consistent around state law, but offhand, so I would have thought that we would address that, but.
I think you can't limit it to one anymore, but that's, I'll agree to whatever you come and.
So.
So, perhaps we should.
I have the changes that we made here.
Was there anything regarding bedrooms?
No, so unless, if you, paragraph A, B, or C reference bedrooms.
A, B, or C, you know, reference bedrooms.
No.
Adding paragraph ten referencing attachment to the structure.
Right.
That was it, and then five hundred square feet.
All right, so we didn't change anything about bedrooms, so, um.
I mean, I'll accept it for what it is and then if it changes at some point.
Well, I would say if we conclude that state law says we have to allow for two bedrooms, then, you know, there's a case for that and we would have to allow that.
Could add that on our list, huh?
Look at, you know, don't change it for me.
Well, no, I mean, we can't have regulations that are in conflict with state law, so, you know, if, if that is the case, then we can address that. I would say not in time for tonight because we need to make sure that we're.
We can, all right.
You've got to prove it this way.
Working on language and where it goes appropriately, but.
So we'll follow up on that and then not more than two people occupying, is that the same, probably the same deal? We can't limit that, do we know? I look at the state rights, what about, you have plenty of off-street parking, not going to be condominium ownership, septic systematic for both units, accessory dwelling must be attached to the primary dwelling, has convenient direct access to the primary dwelling, parents shall remain out of single-family, size will be seven fifty, primary dwelling and accessory share common utilities including wells, septic heating, electrical.
That's true, nothing's individually needed.
The design of the accessory dwelling should be such that it would be readily adaptable to conversion into part of the primary dwelling, which.
So, um, how old does the septic system and, you know, what is it rated for?
So, it's a four-bedroom septic and a four-bedroom house. I'm not going to add.
Bedrooms.
A bedroom. I'm not adding any square footage to the house.
Well, you're not adding square footage, but are you making a den into a bedroom in this conversion or something like that?
Um.
What is your total number of bedroom counts after the conversion?
I guess it would be five and I'm not positive what the septic is, if it's a four or a five-bedroom septic.
I think we should have that verified.
And would you consider, or would you convert one of the bedrooms in the main house to a den?
I mean, that's a possibility, too, if I, because I don't need even the three. That's why I was, before I actually hired an engineer and started designing a kitchen and all that kind of stuff, I wanted to first make sure I could get it with the conditions that I have to resolve and then fine-tune it, but that would be a possibility. If I don't have a five-bedroom septic or it's not easy enough to expand it, then one of the other ones that's technically not going to be used anyway would just become a, I could do that, I could make it a den.
That would work.
Yeah, it would work, so.
I know.
Where only uses bedrooms.
You've been skeptical, but.
No, I'm not skeptical, I'm wondering about the process and where do we go from here?
I think first, what we do is find out from the applicant, how big the system is, if it is four-five, and then he can, when he did, issues a, when he submits a building permit application for the actual conversion and renovation, then we can confirm that the number of bedrooms in the building complies with.
I agree. Can we consider the application complete without the septic plan and just make that one of the?
Well, it's, I guess it's up to the board, but I mean, if.
I have to meet these condi, even if you approve it.
Yes.
It's like if it was new construction, even if you approve that I can do it, I still need to meet all the conditions in order to get a permit and then an occupancy certificate.
Well, right, but I think I would want to.
It would be improved subject to it meeting.
You don't want.
So was it, what, I, I can't imagine it's rated for three bedrooms, for example, but what if the septic is really not even?
I would have to bring it up.
Then here, right.
He won't give me.
All right, so we're really just deciding whether the idea is okay. I apologize for monopolizing the floor.
The concept, yes.
If I were building new, I would still need to go through him completely, even though you've approved the house being there, he still has to make sure it's all good. I'm just thinking, I'll have to.
So just, I was going to read a couple things from the statute. The statute says, six seventy-four, colon, seventy-two, entitled accessory dwelling units, this is Roman five, the applicant for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit shall be made adequate, shall make adequate provisions for water supply and sewage disposal for the accessory dwelling unit in accordance with RSA four eight five hyphen capella, colon, thirty-eight, but separate systems shall not be required for the principal and accessory dwelling units. In order to comply with this paragraph, in prior to constructing an accessory dwelling unit, an applicant, application for approval for a sewage disposal system shall be submitted in accordance with RSA four eight five hyphen capella is applicable, the approved sewage disposal system shall be installed if the existing system has not received construction approval and approved, approval to operate under current rules or predecessor rules or the system fails or otherwise needs to be repaired or replaced. So, to me, that's saying that we don't have to know that in order to grant this, but prior to him building, he's got to do this. It also says, just going on some other things, that under Roman nine, under this section, a municipality may not limit an accessory dwelling unit to only one bedroom. Something that I. So, I guess that's what I have to add on that for, right? This is Roman four, any municipal regulation applicable to single-family dwellings shall also apply to the combination of principal dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit, including, but not limited to lot coverage standards and standards for maximum occupancy per bedroom. The municipality may require adequate parking to accommodate accessory dwelling unit out of that. So, those are the end of my comments. Anybody else want to comment from the board or Tom?
I, I took it the same way in that you still have to meet all the obligations and statutes, so as far as presenting the idea tonight, accepting it as complete, I understand this point of want to make sure that it is something that can, you know, realistically be done before investing in other engineering development on that same way.
Yeah, it seems like the only real thing to resolve is the septic and if it isn't large enough, then you have to make it larger.
So on that, I would move that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that, okay.
And so this is before we vote, so are we, are we making a final decision on this tonight?
Um, we could, I'm just voting for completeness, but we could.
Okay, all right. No, I'm not, I guess I, I wouldn't mind pausing a little bit, I'm sure they want to pause this because I'm trying to think if there's any, in this practical matter, a problem with it being held as complete as to whether it's any incapability somehow with what we, you know, the long process we went through, through the whole development to begin with, I suppose not, but because it would be subject to the same easel restrictions and everything else.
And because they have to allow it anywhere we allow it somewhere to land anyway.
And.
It doesn't mean any obligations, it's kind of, it doesn't mean any of the stipulations, it's going to come back up as we do since the process.
Right, right.
We have that protection there, that it still has to, just because we say it's complete and/or moving forward, he's still obligated to satisfy every bit of stipulation that is written or has been revamped to current and to be in line with the state.
And in terms of the water issue that's not, we get, we had a study from the fire department as it was laid out.
Yeah, for this plot, yeah, for water supply, yes.
So it is one more unit.
Is one more unit.
But it was adequate. So normally, one more unit would not.
True.
Raise alarms for pressure issues.
Okay, okay.
But I appreciate that exercise in, in the context of development, though, I think it's good.
And number sixteen does say, accessory, excuse me, accessory dwelling unit occupancy permit will have to be obtained and shall be revoked if all of these conditions are not maintained, so there is an avenue, I mean, it's, I don't see any reason for, if they wish, to grant it and then we'll just follow up.
I think in fairness to the applicant, that's probably a better way to go as opposed to requiring him to spend funds investigating the septic service only to find out he's not going to be able to pursue it any further after that expense has been incurred. So I understand the cart before the horse, but like Tom said, we've still got the protection of knowing that if it doesn't meet everything as it's written, you know, that's, it needs to be made to meet those conditions or it won't fly.
Right, and I think there you have conditions of approval.
Yes, because I know you're concerned about, right.
True.
And I, I share those concerns, but, I mean, if, sort of say, there is an out, the out being that he still has to meet everything that's been decided prior to this point in time.
Okay, all right. So your suggestion is to, again, find it complete, yes?
Just, just complete, yeah, and then we can discuss further.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yes, okay, all right, all in favor say finding the application complete, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? All right, so, next step.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, right now.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Forgive me, it's been a very, very long day.
You're doing great.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment upon this application for conditional use? Seeing none, I'm going to call a public hearing closed.
Oh, you might want to suspend it because we have another issue.
Ah, I'm going to suspend it instead, all right.
We're all still arguing.
All right, and then if you want to present the next issue, I think, yes?
Well, there are separate issues.
Well, there are.
There are separate issues.
Do you want to vote on? Eighteen.
So, do we want to vote on?
Accepting the application.
Accepting the application.
So.
Wait a second, I'm sorry.
No.
Excepted as complete.
It's complete.
Yeah, yes. And then you had a public hearing for the conditional use permit.
Yes, we're only on the response.
Right, but we should, I think, right, close the public hearing and then.
I think we just.
Well, not suspend.
Separate topics, separate topics.
I thought I was, sorry.
Yeah, so I think the public hearing should be closed and then we start over again with the waiver.
Second thing, sorry.
All right, so I'm closing the public hearing and I'm going to start on the septic issue.
Well, now we're not, we're going to vote on the first issue.
But it's for the first issue. No, no, I thought I heard Tom say differently, but I'm not hearing well.
All right, so I would move that we accept the conditional use, that we approve the conditional use permit contingent upon the proof of the septic system being adequate for the proposed total number of bedrooms for the structure.
Okay.
I will second that.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. All right, now we can do, now next question. All right, I'm ready.
So this is, this is the second item that we have tonight and this is relative to lots three and four of the, of the subdivision and this is, this is a great situation where as, what we'd like to do is put in a common drive and normally that's something that we like to do is part of the open space subdivision, they're, they're kind of in concert with the open space and less, less impervious and more efficient development, but in gen, in general, people don't like common drives, so we shy away from them. But in, in this case, Mike has an opportunity where he's got two, two prospective buyers of three and four that desire a common drive, so it fits right, it fits right into how we would like to, when we begin with, with the common and construction. So we have requested the, one of them at the end. We have requested a waiver from, from section nine dot two H five that says all driveways shall conform to the side where there are setbacks contained in the current zoning regulations. So we're, we're asking to allow the common driver to go down, down the common lot line between lots three and four and then have each, each owner split off and access their, their own residence from that. So we're proposing a thirty-foot wide easement and the common drive would be constructed in that and it goes back, it goes back about a hundred and fifty feet back off the cul-de-sac at Scarlet Lane and we think, we think it's a good idea.
Tom, comments, please.
I think it's a good idea, Chuck.
Okay.
Okay, so, I just want to bring up as a point of information that the shared driveway provision was created after the resident on now Nordic Lane.
Yes, I do, I understand Kevin, that's how we had to.
I wasn't, I, I think you're the only one left, maybe Kevin.
No, Kevin was around, Kevin, Kevin predates me, yeah.
Okay, so, it is complicating, that language is confusing and.
But it was a different situation where that was coming right off four and this is creating, not coming right off this cul-de-sac that is, you know.
And yet they're both comm, say, shared driveways and yet they're very different situations and the application of each should be considered differently, but yet it's one term for.
But still looked at on a project-by-project basis regardless of.
Well, right, but the language doesn't really treat them as two different things, the language treats them as one thing and so my point with that is that there was eventually what turned into a subdivision off of a, of a shared driveway. Someone fought long and hard for that. This isn't a subdivision off of a shared driveway, it's two, two properties sharing a driveway and where, and, and so that's why the regulations are written that the shared driveway has to meet setback requirements and yet inherently in this drawing, there would be no way to meet that.
Right.
And that's where the language is flawed. So I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that we have to work on that at some point, but those are our regs right now.
So Tom, can I ask you this, are the, is the total impervious area smaller, the same, or larger than if two separate driveways had been constructed?
It's my understanding to be less.
Less, correct.
And these are the pork chop, now we're a lot, so in this instance, it's going to be, there's a lot of benefits aesthetic and I think, like you said, less coverage. If there was a place for a shared driveway, it's just a short, very short amount of it that would be shared, but we can see where the, the house to the left branches off almost immediately, so it's just going to make a less cluttered subject, better front yards, more grass.
I think it's very unusual that someone actually requests a shared driveway. So I mean, where, where that's the case, then it's going to be that the future property owners will benefit and I think it's win-win.
So I'm wondering if your covenant or if there's other deep language that manages this relationship for future subsequent owners than the ones who are intending to purchase this?
It's going to be their forever home, but if, if they ever were.
Well, a hundred years from now, I'm not.
So, so at the closings, the lawyers that handle the closings will actually create that easement and it will survive with the land.
I, I guess my question is more around maintenance and plowing and like that, is there, is there some kind of?
There is, there isn't at this point, but there.
But you're going to do that.
There needs to be, yes.
Yes.
There would be an agreement where they would each be splitting the cost of maintaining and installing that driveway for their own good, too, but yes, that would be a reasonable condition.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any questions?
I just have a question. Is it okay?
No.
I'm just looking at the easement that you have shaded out here and I understand the building envelope and setbacks, the potential house, building envelope for lot three, that's pretty much where the house is going, has to go. You're just extending the easement five and then it really, then the actual driveway will probably go, or will the driveways, will this driveway tend to over, I mean, I know you're going for the easement at this point, but is the plan to run the driveway just up to the first, furthest point that it needs to?
Exactly.
Not the entire length of the easement?
Well, I went safe and just drew it.
Okay.
Yeah, again, these are the same houses that we presented at, at the last meetings that aren't real houses, they're, they're demonstrate that houses fit there and, and so when this house actually gets designed, we'll find out how the driveway gets into it, so we wanted to make sure we left it.
But that driveway on lot four is absolutely going to break off early, because it has no, it's not a deep house, it can't be, the building envelope is pushing it up by the road.
Yeah.
So it really will be a single driveway, as soon as it passes, but, you know, first house there, it's, it's not shared anymore.
Okay.
Shared entrance, yeah.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
Shall we vote it complete, yeah, we should have accepted it as complete first, I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second.
All in favor of finding the, as complete, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? All right, now we'll open up for a public comment, if they would like to comment on this proposal for shared driveway. Seeing none, I think I'm going to actually close the hearing as opposed to suspend it. Okay. And I think we entertain a motion to approve this request, yes?
I would move that we approve the shared driveway request.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, very good. Thank you, guys, thanks.
Thank you very much. I'll call you at some point.
Thank you. Will we move it up down?
Sure, yes, yep. Sure, yes, yep.
I have a diamond to do here.
Yeah.
Cool, I do that.
Thank you, good night.
I didn't, because the board looked at it, feel that really is a lot more thought in my mind in terms of pretty non-performing lots. And I sat down, I looked at the maps and I said, this is a much bigger undertaking and it can't be done lightly. And so, I decided to withdraw.
That doesn't make sense, we're recording this year.
Right, no, I know, I know, and I'm, I am, I'm disappointed in myself after that, like, I could not
It's a big undertaking, on short notice.
And I just felt that in responsibility, I couldn't just, it wasn't right to put something, and I wouldn't call it slapdash, but not carefully thought out and creating problems, and not good for this year. I hope Tom doesn't think I went the wrong way.
Not at all, no, I'm surprised that you were taken as an undertaking by yourself. I mean, I'm just as a committee of several and takes months to do something.
Alright, so I feel better about coming to the conclusion that I I bit off more than I could chew, so, alright.
Yeah, initially sounded so, you know, like, oh, how good to have, you know, more preserved.
Yeah, no, I just, it's, so if I looked down, looked at it, said this is
I would like them on a discussion.
Yes, no, I think we need more discussion.
Action and discussion.
Yeah.
Alright, so, the next item is the, the proposal. And, so do we need to read these or not? I mean, the, because we, this is the same language we have previously agreed to, this is the
Yes, the first one, if I may, the first one, I just put the abutter in like Sarah suggested that refers to the state ranks. So it's basically gonna be, an abutter is whoever directly joins a property or is across the street or string as opposed to any distance. And then we have to change, if this is approved, we have to change the applications to reflect that. Because as I recall, one application has it two hundred feet and something else has it a hundred feet.
A two hundred.
Oh, three hundred.
But they're not consistent.
Yes. So that's that first new definition, the second one you're familiar with, the junkyard and then the new section junkyard, I did make the changes that we just, that we talked about above the expense being borne by the applicant and not allowing any kind of expansion. So, oh yeah, so on the second, on the backside, two-thirds of the way down, section four dot eight, I didn't realize in this Warren article, which I just didn't realize, that all of that stuff was already done.
So we've done that, so, right, to be clear, especially for Sue because you're new, the version, the paper version is now, I think, two revisions old, two revision years old. So after March and we, you know, it's, it's cumbersome to print a new version every year because it, it's just, it's just hard. But I think we should print a new version just for staff.
Third time, third time's been the magic, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's getting to be too much to try to remember and reference what, what's not up to date in those versions.
Well, I, I, not to brag, but I have the most updated version because I'm the one who usually makes the changes after they get approved. So we do have a copy that's completely up to date.
Which I think is the one that's on the website.
Yes.
So the website, just so you all know, if you, if you put zoning in the search bar on the website, it will bring you to a link for the zoning ordinance, which is the most up-to-date version. So it, it does exist and it is out there, it's just that we're all running on old paper copies, so I apologize about.
I mean, if anything, if you just reference the back where it has like an index of the changes made.
But thank you, Tom, for noticing that.
So the, the other ones we did discuss, section eleven dot three dot two dot one, just the lead by the planning board, that was where the special exception required a planning board to, you know, say something was a reasonable use before they could proceed to the zoning board. And in the lead painting from that section thirteen dot one, increase the dollar amount for a project that requires a permit from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. And I, this is one little one I noted, it's thirteen dot four, it's
Do we have to go, do we have to vote on a typo? Like, I, I would think that that's something we can probably just correct.
Okay, let's do that. Scrib reserve.
I, I would, I would guess that that's what that is.
Yeah. Alright.
But thank you for, thank you.
So, what's that?
I'm surprised there is just one.
You what?
One typo.
I know we discussed last time about the, the fee and the, do you decide determine that the town is charging the two fifty, which is the max, or not?
On the junkyard?
Yes.
I think not, we have, it should be. But that was one of the changes that we made is, is the, the fee is as established by the select board. So if the fee goes up, we don't have to change it in the ordinance.
Right, okay, that's right.
So that
So the select board can change it anytime.
It's the safest way to do it, to not have to revisit it if, you know, you
And I, and I think it's a good idea that we, we recommend the select board is one of the fifty dollars.
So, just to make sure, I heard correctly too, that we go onto the town website and for search, we go into zoning.
To the search bar, but just the words zoning, and you'll get some other references about zoning, but the first one would be a link to the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
It also, that link, it gives you the, the ordinance, but it also gives you the zoning map. So that big unruly map that I brought from my wall, you can see that in color.
Okay.
There's a link to that, too.
So do I, any members of the public like to comment upon the zoning changes regarding the junkyards? And I closed the public portion of the
Is she against this one?
No, that's good. Okay, so, then I, I, I would make a motion that we, I would move that we accept all of these proposed zoning, zoning ordinance revisions as currently proposed and to move them on to ballot.
So one question, so we discovered a problem and we don't revisit this here, but, so on page forty-eight, accessory dwelling units, it's not forty, the bedroom is in here somewhere. Do we
Number four, yeah.
What's that?
Number four.
Number four. Number four says only one bedroom is permitted in the accessory dwelling, so
How is that word in the state ranks, though?
It says you cannot limit the number of bedrooms.
Cannot.
Right.
But you've got a square foot limit, so however they choose to use that square foot.
Right.
That portion, which is Roman nada, of what I said, it says simply, quote, "A municipality may not limit an accessory dwelling unit to only one bedroom," end of quote, so
Wouldn't now be the time to clean that up?
Well, that's what I'm sort of wondering about.
Well, we, where it's very straightforward and I don't think it is a huge exercise in language and, and anything else, we could just propose to delete number four if you want to do that and we can add. I just wanna make a comment that we got a lot of zoning, we're making for a very long ballot on top of an otherwise very long ballot. It, it's, it should be done, that's not really the planning board's problem. But we already can't, you know, we can't be in conflict with the state law. We did not act in conflict with the state law, it ought to be cleaned up, so
But you're saying, to not overwhelm the voter, to, to not do it this year.
I'm just suggesting
It's not enforceable as it is because the state
Right, and we're at least now aware of that, and so we wouldn't try to enforce it. So I'm not sure that I'm, so for zoning here, it looks like we've got two so, so the junkyard, the definition and new section I think can be handled in one article. The abutter is another article. And then whether or not you can paint and the cost, I think, is another, is a third.
Is by the planning board.
Yeah, and so, so that's four. So we've already, we've got four, do we, do we want it out of
As long as this being, and, and I'm a little bit under the answer to this, as long as the fact that four is not enforceable doesn't somehow invalidate the entire
No.
provision, then I'm okay with not addressing it, if it somehow does, then that would be my concern.
I would just wanna make sure that we're keeping track so that next year it is the first thing that we bring up to change.
What, can you tell me the exact section?
Sure, it is section of the state law or section of the
At the end of the ordinance.
It is section eight, point one, three in parentheses, small four in parentheses, that's how we do it, I think.
It's eight point one, or eight point one, point three, point four.
Just so I know where it is. I'll, I'll, I can start.
Which is currently on, on page forty-eight, yes.
We'd also have
Mine, mine isn't.
We'd also have to just make a comment to renumber the following ones accordingly.
Yes.
So in the past, we haven't renumbered. If we've, if we've stricken a section, we just, it's just
Oh, just like now, delete it as of whatever date. Oh, interesting.
Okay.
That's, I think, the law does that, you see that in statute all the time, that, you know, certain provisions are just gone and you don't know what they are, they're just gone.
Well, they often say, it often will say
You have to look back in history to see what they
It'll be, that, you know, eliminated or whatever on such, such a date.
Right.
So that if you have to go back and compare
Right.
you, you know, when, time-wise, it happened, because sometimes that's relevant to enforcing someone's rights or throwing
So that's probably a good idea.
See the history, that way you can actually track the history when the changes were
But could you add the date, though, that it was
Yes, because if, so if you strike something, that gets added to the index exactly what was stricken. At least it has been.
But it's a last on the body of the text where it existed and then put at the very end.
Yes.
Well, you're keeping A, and it just says deleted on whatever date.
Right, so the index, the index of changes is a historical record, like what's been changed.
Okay, that's a good reference right there.
It doesn't go away, it doesn't disappear necessarily. You don't need to like go reference your old document.
Okay.
Okay.
Less than
Yeah, but that may make what's currently in effect cleaner to read if that was only then you just look back and you change index.
Yeah, well, and the thing is like, yeah, it, I think it's easier just to strike it as deleted rather than to try to renumber it all.
Well, then it brings your attention to the fact that something used to be there, that's not, but maybe you're curious about now and wanna go see what that is. As opposed to if it's just gone and renumbered, then you wouldn't think of that.
Yeah.
Even though it may end up being, it's likely a moot point, but
But it shows you that something that was in effect is, has been changed, modified.
And how, by the way, would someone who noticed that, how would they, where would they go to figure that out?
The back, the index of changes.
One, two.
Ah, right, 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 thank you.
And so you made, when you delete it, you make a note saying when it was deleted. So then you can immediately reference it in the back because you just
So the information's all still there.
Okay, great.
Good.
I think that's all the business we have tonight.
Well, okay, so I made a motion, if somebody wanted to second it, that we approve these and move these forward to the ballot.
I'll second that.
It's all Sue, it's all Sue.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, aye.
Thank you all.
The ayes have it.
If necessary, was that our workshop?
Yes, I didn't know whether it would be necessary to propose.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea.
I think, yeah.
I think you're happy to.
Yes.
Yeah, when you're dealing with zoning changes.
Yes, especially with zoning changes, yes, so thank you.
So you wanna propose a motion to approve? Yeah, I propose to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Correspondents, I just wanna
I did read it.
Yeah, I thought you might.
I have that. So, did anyone else get a copy of it?
I, I emailed it.
Great, great, so
And by the way, you all got a personnel paper copy. I just thought it'd be more expedient and just email it to all of you so that we could know it and digest it more quickly. I'm talking about the email with the attachment about a land use, some kind of state housing land board.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What did people in the Hampton area look like?
Well, it looked like they're the ones who are concerned about this and trying to rile the rest of us into action. Contact your senator and disagree with what's about to happen is the premise of the letter. But yeah, they're all from Northampton.
Alright, so that
So there is, I believe it said there's a public comment period with the state right now because that's where it is in the legislative process. So if anybody has any thoughts and wants to share them, you know, David Waters is your senator, as they say, and you're more than welcome to weigh in with him about how you feel about it. And, you know, and as much as any resident cares, you know, anybody really is. Public comment is about public, so, you know, if you feel passionate about it, then you can spread the news to your neighbors and get other people to chime in, too.
Okay.
I have to say, if, if this is accurate, then it takes a lot of the authority for zoning ordinance, planning or, planning boards out of the hands of the municipality.
Right, yeah, it is pretty wild.
It is wild.
Yeah.
I don't know where that would even be coming from, I wonder who would even sponsor that.
Yeah, that is, that is bizarre.
So, approve the minutes, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. We've read the correspondence, we've talked with the correspondents.
Any other additions?
Which will turn?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you everyone tonight. Yes, no, no, I'm sorry for my lateness and my minimal confusion, no, that's, yes, I'll stay around.
Alright, let me go grab that, tell local attorney.
Okay, Tom, I wanted to return this, where should I put it?
Oh.